Obviously, you are causing a breach of the peace. Obviously, you are causing a breach of the peace. Obviously, you are causing a breach of the peace. You don't wanna get arrested for that.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Whoa, 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 whoa. A breach of the peace is a serious accusation. How did he get? Can you give me, what's the definition of bre- can you cite bre- breach of the peace?
Right.
Can you cite it?
I'm not getting into.
You just said breach of the peace. He just made a serious accusation.
You think it's breach of the peace, sir. This is becoming a bit of a.
Hang on, I was talking to you. You just said a breach of the peace. Yeah? This is a serious accusation, sir.
It's not a serious accusation.
Of course it is. That's an arrestable offence.
Of course it's an arrestable offence.
Yeah, so why would you say such a thing? I'm here talking.
Okay, but a breach of the peace to be to arrest you, to remove you from the building and then let you go. We don't have to book you in, we don't have to book you into custody. But at the same time, I'm asking you as a.
Yeah, but there's an action I have to do for me to breach the peace.
The lady has asked you reasonably before she went off to get seen in the manor twenty years wait over there. And then you said, no, I'm gonna freak to look around and tell the manor twenty.
No, we, we are arguing. We're arguing whether I can go up or I can't go up. I still have a lot of. We're not arguing as in arguing.
Okay, what's your, what's your first name?
Uh, but don't I give you my name?
Don't I give you your name?
No.
Okay, all right. I'm Stuart.
Stuart, what's your badge number, by the way?
What's my badge number? It's five eight oh nine, Beverleyshire.
Sorry?
Beverleyshire, calling number five eight oh nine.
Thank you.
What is it, what is it you want to say today?
What's your shoulder number?
Five six seven five.
Five six seven five. Are you from Bedfordshire as well?
You're from Bedfordshire, please.
So, thank you.
Hi.
What is it you want to?
I'm, I'm, uh, I'm a council.
Hi.
Can I help? Is there a.
All right, sorry, who are you?
My name's Peter Bagley.
Yeah.
I'm director of planning and sustainability.
Great, okay. This is getting a little bit out of hand. Sorry about this.
Okay.
All right.
Shall we have a sit down?
I'm just, uh, no, no, not good. I'm just a member of the public. That's all it is. I've seen this amazing building.
Yeah.
But you cannot avoid really. It's an amazing building, isn't it?
It's fantastic.
It's been around three years.
Yeah.
I'm just here, just, I thought I'd take a few pictures, look around and everything. As I, I was doing this, this gentleman over there, he just restricted me from doing so. We're sitting here, I'm trying to explain to him it's a public building. It's open for the public. You are open, you're not closed? Yeah? I'm just in, out, and I'm gone. I just, I just wanna take pictures. It's amazing. I, I, I've explained to him, I will not go anywhere private. I'm not here to run to rule. I will not go in any, into, inside any meetings or, you know, annoy anybody or anything like that. I'm just kinda looking publicly accessible areas.
Okay.
Yeah? And that's it. And now, I've got like, um, this guy, he came in, that lady over there came in, and then these two police officers, for some reason, they were here as well.
Yeah.
That's all it is. I'm not asking for much, really.
Obviously, we have a lot of people here. We come in with different businesses, that's why the police officers are here.
Yeah, yeah, it's amazing.
Welcome, because we do a lot of good work with the place.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, um, we're not allowed to, uh, our, we're not allowed to get, let people come and wander around the building unattended. Because we have sensitive material in the building, and we have people working here. It's their place of work. They should be able to do that without the, the public coming in and out. What we do have are there are tours, I think.
How many stages?
For members of the public to come and, come and visit, come and have a look round. So if you'd like, we can get some information about that. And you can come on one of the tours and see, that, you'd actually get to see more of the building if you came on the tour than if we just let you walk around.
The question was, is this open for the public as it stands now?
The, the building, there are parts of the building that you can come into.
That's the part I'm interested in.
Come into public reception.
That's what I'm interested in.
Okay.
I just want, anything that's publicly accessible, which I'll repeat myself for more time. Anything that's publicly accessible.
Yeah.
I would like to visit it.
Okay. This part of the building isn't public.
This part of the building isn't?
This is on the public tours. So if you want to book onto a tour, you can come on and you can see it when you get shown around by a guide who tells you all of the great things so you can.
Do you agree with me or not? When, when a, a door says on it private or restricted, that's not publicly accessible. Any door that's open and it doesn't say that, uh, it doesn't state that is publicly accessible. Do you agree with me?
I'm not qualified to comment on that. I, I'm not a lawyer, actually.
In, in common sense, is that, is that, is that common sense?
I'm, I'm not gonna comment on that.
And especially when you've got doors like it, you say that.
If you want to come to the public reception area, I'm quite happy to show you around there now.
Where is the public reception area?
That's over on the other side of the building, in the newer part of the building. But I say, if you really want to come and see the building, the older part of the building, at its best, book yourself onto a tour. There's no charge for that.
No.
No? There's no charge for those.
Of course there's no charge, it's a public building.
And you get shown by a guide who tells you all of the really great details that you wouldn't see if you were able to come down the road. But I really have to say, you're not able to come and get public access on.
But I've already gained access.
Beyond this.
How do you explain me gaining access already?
Well, obviously, come in through the door, yes, exactly, but.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Because this has public access.
No, you're not able to come into here, my friend.
So am I, am I trespassing right now?
Not trespassing, it's just that we have controls on who's able to come in. Trespass, again, I'm not a legal officer, but trespass is a different thing.
Well, if, if, if you are somewhere where you're not supposed to be, trespassing, yeah.
Again, I'm not a legal officer, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not able to come at all.
All right, I think, me personally, yeah. Uh, I'm not being a, uh, like, you know, confrontational or anything like that.
Yeah.
But I think you're mistaken. I think this is publicly accessible. I think it's a, it's a public building, and I think it's open to the public. And I think any members of the public, taxpayers that pay for their taxes, can enter this building anytime, not anytime, sorry, once it's open. And view it, photograph it, and get out. That, that's my belief, and I think you're mistaken.
Okay. Well, we, we have different views on this. If you'd like to, to challenge us on that.
Uh-huh.
Then by all means, uh, drop me an email or drop the chief executive an email. And we'll be happy to give you the rights and wrongs as to who can come in and what time.
So how do you get from here? Are you gonna kick me out from here?
Uh, I'm, I'm gonna ask you to go to the public areas, yes.
This is very public to me.
The public areas, the bits down here.
So why is this open? I, I need to challenge this.
It's an historic building.
This is challengeable.
It's an historic building. If we were to put screens and doors across it, it would change the character of the building. But we are allowed to restrict access to it.
Then restrict it, by all means.
That, that's something that we're looking at.
But you need to be, if you're gonna restrict access to a door, you need to make a sign on it. Like some doors, they have like a swipe cards.
Yeah.
I noticed them already.
Yeah.
You need to have that on it. If it doesn't have that, it's publicly accessible.
Well, again, I'm not, I'm not.
And if you're not, if you're not qualified, then maybe you shouldn't be talking to me.
So if you make those comments.
Uh-huh.
When you drop us an email.
Yeah.
Then we'll be happy to respond to you.
But you said you're not qualified.
Tell you chapter and verse. No, I'd ask the legal officer and chief executive to write back to you.
But, so until then, we cannot determine whether I'm legally standing here or not?
Uh, until then, we're not allowed to, to let.
Not allowed is not, we, we need, we need to speak. Whether I, I'm lawfully standing here or not. Not allowed is not exactly a word. Not allowed, I mean, what's that mean?
Our, our practice is that we do not allow unaccompanied members of the public to walk around the building.
So, sir, are you asking him to?
Uh, I'm asking him to move, I'm asking him to use the public area.
I said, but leave from this, this, which is down there.
And, you know, quite happy to show you our reception, show you all the services we offer, uh, quite happy to do that. And I'll give you my email address, and if you have any issues, contact me. And I'll forward that onto a legal officer, the chief executive, who will respond to your invite and explain why we're not allowed unaccompanied members of the public to come into the building.
Which is what? What, what's this building, the name of this building again?
This is the Guildhall. The Guildhall.
Right. So where do you want me to go now?
Uh, if you come out of the public area, then I'll show you what we do in the.
So you're telling me this is not public area?
If you come into reception, then I'll show you what we do down there.
So this is a public area.
Allow members of the public to come in.
I, I'm just gonna film outside, before I come with you, I'm just gonna film outside. I need to show.
Absolutely, I'll tackle this. So, if you want to.
I, I need to show my views exactly what you're telling me is not a public area.
What views is it you're doing this for?
You, that's not, that's not publicly accessible, yeah?
So guys, this is not publicly accessible. So while I'm coming through the door. It's, that's very publicly accessible.
Should we turn it into a shop? And I'll show you that you're allowed to use. The services are better. So this is coming into the, the much newer part of the building.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, this was extended, I think in the, uh, eighties and nineties.
Yeah.
Somebody told me it used to be a big car park, it probably called it the ground, they did. And this is obviously public accessible because there's toilets there.
Yeah.
We are looking to get, um, some screens across that to restrict access. And this is the main point of reception, where people can.
That's, that's the boring part.
So, so, so we offer, it's, it's the newer part, certainly. Uh, we offer a, this was a shop where people could come in, they could access council services through the, through the, through the service.
Uh-huh.
And, and this is the public hall. It's, it's not just council, it's that the place has a presence here as well. Um, so it's sort of a whole community building. And that's the good thing about people being able to come in, accessing longer services and support services, uh, as well as, um, being able to come in and talk to the council as well. So, come through here, this is it. So this is where people can come in and talk to specialists, um, in the council services, about the social services and.
So this is the council area?
Sorry?
This is the council, basically.
This is still part of the council.
So, what's, so, I don't, I still don't understand why, why it's, what's so special about the area where I was?
Well, because we have people working there.
There's more people working here.
And, uh, we have, um, we have.
I think if anything, I'm here, I can get, here, there's more private information going around here than, than the area where I was.
No, it's not, it's not. And there's also the security of people who are working there, um, these people have security measures. But if you were able to walk into the offices, we couldn't guarantee the security of the, the people working over there as well.
I wasn't.
But, but.
I wasn't going to.
Like I said, I, I'm giving you my details.
You know, you're gonna incriminate me until, you know. It's like you're saying, i- if your issue was me going inside the offices while meetings are upheld, then, then I understand, you can act then. But I wasn't planning to do this.
No, no, it's not special at all. But it's just, we have to have, we have to have some rules about who's allowed to come into the building.
So where's these rules and regulations then?
Well, if you, as I said, if you drop me an email, I haven't got a card, I've got a business card.
Drop me an email, that's absolutely fine. I'm the building manager.
You're the building manager?
So, if you wanna drop me an email.
So, do you, do you stand with that as well? I'm not, I'm not supposed to go up there?
So, the, the issue is, right, we generally don't allow people just to wander around the building filming. Because although we are a public building, we have a lot of events on here. And there's always the risk that you might go into an area where there's an event, where there's other members of the public.
Mm-hmm.
That have actually paid for their space.
Uh-huh.
So that, that's the rule that we have.
I'm not planning to do that.
No, but you don't know who's actually booked the spaces, do you? So we don't actually allow you to wander around.
So are there meetings? Are there even like council meetings or?
No, they're not council meetings, they're private hires by private customers.
I, I won't plan to go into private rooms, I promise. And if I did, then that by all means acts.
Even the area over there, you can have people coming out of the ceremony room.
Okay.
After their wedding.
Yeah.
Sure.
So they're, they're standing there having their wedding photographs taken.
Yeah, yeah.
And we don't want people just wandering through, because then that spoils the wedding photographs. I'm quite happy, if you want to write to me, to put it all right in for you, as to the rules of the building.
This doesn't make sense to me. I feel like, uh, I, I don't wanna escalate things or anything like that, uh.
I know. I mean, it's, I'll tell you what, right? If you, if you want to write to me, right?
But I'm here to, I'm just here to visit.
And then we can arrange a time.
Yeah.
When I can give you a guide who can give you a little tour of the building and show you around.
Yeah, we could, we could talk about that service being available. And you'd see so much more of the building.
But I'm here today, that's what I'm saying.
And somebody can talk about the history of the building as well.
Yeah.
What, are these people around that don't allow you to, to go and see it?
Sorry?
So the history that these people around that don't allow you to go and see it?
No, we're prepared to give you a tour of the building.
I don't wanna tour. I don't wanna tour, but I don't wanna be babysitted. That's all, that's what I'm trying to say.
Right, well, you can't just wander around the building, I'm afraid.
What, what do you mean by wander? I don't understand. Can I wander around here?
This is the public area which is open to the public at all times.
Yeah.
The side over there is only open to the public for events that are going on in that part of the building. So it could be that it's a tour, it could be somebody getting married, it could be somebody having a party, it could be any sort of event. Whoever has hired that side of the building.
So the whole, the whole building is hired right now?
No, I didn't say that. I didn't say that at all.
It's difficult. I feel like, you know, you're trying to tell me it's the rules, it's the rules, and you just want me to, to leave it.
Well, I'm, I'm quite happy.
You know, I don't.
I'm quite happy to put it in writing to you. I've given you my business card, you have my details.
Yeah, but I can, I can hear what you're telling me. You've been telling me, and so does he, and so do them. There's meeting rooms that we don't want you to access, and I keep repeating that, I'm not going inside the meeting rooms.
Okay.
I'm not gonna do that.
Okay, well, we would rather that you do not just wander around the building.
I understand that you'd rather, but if, if I can, then I, then I, I can go. But if you, well, your preferences should not trump my rights, if that makes any sense? But I'm, I'm not being like a.
So you don't actually have a legal right to be in the building? And it's not a right, this, this isn't a building that belongs, that is open or belongs to everyone.
That's my point. If it's open to the public, then it's open.
This belongs to the council, and the council make the rules on who can and cannot come into the building.
Right. So whatever belongs to the council, the areas are publicly accessible, yeah? The public, they have the right to enter them during working hours.
The council is, is like any, anybody who owns their building. We don't have to let somebody else in. Just because we're a public body means we don't have to. What we do is we manage that space, um, and just, like, filming in a public space here.
Yeah, no.
Do you, would you mind not because you.
I'd rather continue. Yeah, I know, this is what I'm saying. This is more private information here.
So, so, okay, no, it, it's just, you know, we as a landlord are able to say, as I understand it, that we're not able, we, we can stop people coming in at certain times.
At certain times, yes, I know, I know.
Well, when we do tours. And if we do, if we do the tours, then you will come in and you will see so much more. So, you know, it, it, it really is quite strange.
So in the tours, you're gonna open all the things that are restricted? Maybe you're gonna open the restricted areas? You're gonna show me, I'm not here for that. I'm just here for, I, I repeat myself, I'm here to look at every publicly accessible areas that are here. And then I will leave. It would, it would, I would have gone a long time ago.
Okay.
Honestly, I would have gone a long time ago.
Show me here, do the publicly accessible area.
I know this is publicly accessible.
It's, it's down there, the courtyard's publicly accessible, but the offices, the part of the building over there aren't.
The offices, I know, you keep repeating this. I know the offices are not, I've seen it.
And the ground floor spaces as well are publicly accessible except by the tour.
But it's open, it just doesn't make sense, because by now, somebody could have gone in and out without you noticing. True?
Those, those are the guard, those are, those are the people there. So, so it's like, the way, the way we said about this, if you need to resolve that, is that you drop us a line, you've got the building manager's details. We will get legal advice, and we'll get the chief exec's advice on it, and we'll come back to you and respond to you and explain why it is.
What's I, what's I, what, what I'm gonna achieve by doing that?
Hopefully, it will satisfy your curiosity and sentiment.
So if I continue going around to every publicly accessible area that's in this building or that building, yeah? If I continue doing this anyway, what are you gonna do?
As I say, um, we would be able to restrict you going into the areas where we do not allow unaccompanied public access, which only accessible to the tours.
No, 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 my question is very clear. I said, if I'm here, I just, I'm just gonna go around everywhere that's publicly accessible. I'm not gonna go anywhere that's restricted. I've said that like a million times, I'm not gonna do that. If it's restrictive, I'm, I'm not there, I'm not even gonna touch it.
But, but I've explained to you which are the publicly accessible spaces. And this bit, round here, the courtyard, that's fine. We're not going to let you get access to the other parts of the building.
Which is open.
Which has doors and spaces going through it, but we do not have to let you walk around.
So, okay, do, do you mind walking with me just one more time? And then I'll be gone.
I can walk you around this.
No, no, I will show you, I'll show you, yeah? Okay, I, I'm gonna walk with you and I'll show you, yeah? Hang on, I just wanna prove something. You see that door there? You can say it's restricted, correct?
We're dealing with people here talking about sensitive matters.
I know, I know.
We're gonna have to stop it, we've got children.
No, don't touch me.
Okay, I'm sorry, but.
Don't touch me.
Okay.
Do not put your hands on me ever again.
I apologize for touching you. So, we, we have children here. If you're going to have them in a shop, that's us. It doesn't look good, does it?
If it's in public, you can. Do not touch me ever again. If it's in a public area, you can.
I asked you to walk in.
I know you're asking me not to. So anyway, what type of proof here? I went that way on purpose to show you that door is clearly restricted, and I will clearly stand out of it. Now I'm gonna walk past here, this door will open automatically, that's publicly accessible.
No, I, I understand the point you're making.
You need to follow common sense.
I understand the point you're making.
Okay.
But just because you can come in.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean you actually have a legal right to come in.
Hang on, I come in here, it's publicly accessible. That's all that I can use. I can sit here, this is the lobby.
Just how she come in.
Okay, now I'm standing here.
To do so.
Do you understand? This is publicly accessible.
Uh, that isn't, is it?
No.
Now, that's controlled, that, that just.
Okay, but this is, it's still publicly accessible.
Just because.
The door is open.
Just because you've got.
Listen, you're a bitter friend, look.
Just because you've got it.
This is all publicly accessible. You see that?
This is not.
That's not correct. I cannot access it. Now, if you find me fiddling with this, trying to get in, call the police. But I'm not gonna do that. This is all publicly accessible. Look, why do you think you've got these? Because it's open to the public.
Fire extinguisher.
Yes, fire extinguisher, look at it.
Fire extinguisher, so do I.
So here. Come, look at, this is.
As I said.
Hang on, that's private, don't get it. Of course I have that right. This is all publicly accessible.
As again.
You're back to this rule again.
I'm, I'm not a legal officer, so I'm not qualified to go into.
But you're trying to deny me my right to access?
But I'm telling you the practice that we do. I'm telling you the practice that we are able to, to restrict access.
I can speak to the police if you like.
We are, we are able to do so.
You're asking to put CCTV, I say, I can go and put my picture with the police if you want me to?
Um.
Because, you know, you know, in.
I'm just putting on CCTV.
It's on. Yeah, yeah, of course.
So, please, drop us an email and we will explain.
I don't wanna drop you an email, I just wanna visit what I can visit, that's it. That's what I wanna do.
Yeah, well, it.
It's silly, I would have gone a long time ago.
I will arrange for you to.
Why would I wanna drop you an email? To, to visit something that I can visit?
Because we have meetings going on here.
But I'd be in and out. The only, the, the people that are making like, they're making a scene and everything is you guys. Me, I'd be in, out.
But we've asked you not to.
Yeah.
Why?
Because people are having meetings here in the public areas that they have paid for space.
Yeah, but I've also paid for this place.
You haven't paid for this.
Of course I pay, this is publicly, it, it's publicly funded.
You don't.
This is publicly funded. Who funds this? Public. I am the public.
You don't fund it as such. We have people that actually pay to have meetings.
We privately hire them. But anything that's publicly accessible, the public funds it. So all this is funded by the public. And now I am the public, I am just here to visit what I funds. That's what it is.
I understand the argument. Uh, I think it's larceny because the council is, the landlord is the owner of this building, so it can be stripped, who can come in and come out. And we have very flexible, and we're on the tours that we've talked about several times, and so you are able to come and see. But it's just at times that the council feels is appropriate, when we know there aren't other meters taking place.
That's fine. But did you see how easily I got in here? Not, not. How, how we walked from that door into here without any restrictions?
Yes. So it was actually gonna be a doorbell, and we have the, this ability concern to actually stop that from happening.
Well, until you do that, I, I've got access to it. Well, until you do that, I, I've got access to it, that's what I'm trying to say. Until you do that, I'm, I'm sorry, I've got no other options apart from not believing that what you're telling me is true, or, I'm not saying you're lying, you might be, uh, you might be mistaken. And I think you're mistaken, personally, I think you're mistaken.
Okay, no, what I.
So because we're arguing, is it publicly accessible or is it not, I'm saying it is, you're saying it's not, so it's like, it's a debate.
Yeah.
I can sit here all day.
And, well, we've got work to do, because we're public servants, so it's been really interesting, it's been really interesting.
You're restricting the public now to visiting.
And what I'm saying.
As a public servant, you should, you should, you should not do this.
If you could write in that I'm quite happy to continue with the advice of colleagues who are qualified to tell you what chapter and verses, then we will do that.
So I would, I would put your, I, I, I would put, uh, I would ask you the same question again, if I continue doing this, what, what's your step, what you're gonna do after that?
Well, we've asked you to leave, I would have no choice but to find the person.
The police officer just walks past now.
Well, he's actually in a meeting, so he is on, he's doing something else, he's not a police officer that's gonna.
We can go and ask the police, because I don't think the police can stop me either.
They can, and they have done before.
For, for what, I'm not doing, creating anything, I'm not doing, causing disturbance.
We've asked you to leave now.
For what reason? For what reason?
Because we've asked you not to wander around the building, because we have meetings here, that fee pay members of the public. Paid for.
They privately rented them.
Yes.
Yeah, so they've done it privately, the, the rooms, they rented them privately, yeah, I understand that, but they have not rented the whole building, sorry?
And they're actually walking around the building, as you can see.
Yeah, and they're using the circulation spaces.
Yeah, they only rented the rooms, they haven't rented the whole place.
Access to it, includes access to the circulation space, so.
Yeah, but the access, they haven't rented the access, that's what I'm trying to say.
They have rented access to the building, yes, I know, so.
How is that?
It's the terms of the renting of the rooms.
I think you're just making it up now, you're just making it up now, I mean, I don't have time, much more time left, I need to leave anyway.
Yes, well, look, you have my email, right, why don't you come, why don't you come?
What's I gonna do, I'm not here to email you, I'm here to, to do my visits.
I'm quite happy.
Yeah.
To give you a tour of the building on another day, when we've made an appointment to do so, when I've got rooms that are empty, and I haven't got a police meeting going on upstairs.
Ah, so that's what it is, there's a police meeting upstairs?
That's a number of meetings.
So because there's a police meeting, you think I shouldn't be in the public, in, in the building, recording, that's what it is.
You're putting words into my colleague's mouth.
Well, that's what it is, you deny me access to a public, to a public building.
We've, we've made the situation very clear, it, it's been good to have a very open and very well-mannered discussion with you about this, and I understand your point of view. But we are public servants, we now have something, other work that we need to go on, so I asked you to leave the building, please.
And if I didn't?
Well, we want to explain what the implications of that might be, but, but you've been a very reasonable gentleman so far, so I'm hoping you're gonna be a reasonable gentleman now. And you sent your email, my colleague, and we'll arrange it to offer you.
I'll personally give you the tour.
Shall I go?
I will personally.
Just do it now, quickly.
I can't, because I've got other things to do, I literally just want to have my hat and coat on when you, no, right?
And we've got other things to do.
You know what, the sad part of all this, I'll tell you what it is, I've already been up there.
Okay.
I've already went up there, and I already looked around, yeah?
Sorry?
I've already went up there and I've already looked around.
Okay, okay.
So you guys are doing this just to prove a point, that's what you're trying to do.
The difficulty we have is now, now that we're aware of the building, the building, we have to respond to that, because it's a, there's, there's safety implications, certainly. We are putting, we are gonna put measures in place.
Do you feel like I'm, I'm, I'm threatening?
So.
So why are you saying this, where's, what, what's the problem?
No, we could have, we have had individuals in here who have been threatened, so this is why we have to be a little bit aware.
Of course, if somebody's been threatened, you know, the only person that did anything that was physical is this guy, he put his hand on me. That's the only guy that did something like that, he put his hand on me, yeah, so that's, to me, that's, that's battery, you know, so I could have gone to the police and, and, and deposit, you know. Uh, I haven't been threatened, I've just been talking all the way, it's my access and my, my freedom of, of movement's been restricted by them two guys.
No.
And now you guys are coming telling me here I cannot access public buildings, but the only thing you don't realize is, you're not telling me I can access pub, public buildings, you're telling about a hundred thousand people. That's why you don't realize.
Okay, well, but anybody who's interested, I would suggest them to email into the council as well, and we'll explain why the rights of access, uh, are applied by the landlord in the building that they own, so quite happy to do that.
It is the building that you own, now, now you're working correctly, because you realize who you're talking to.
Council owns, yeah, it's difficult in a listed building, of course, because what we're trying to secure it in a way that doesn't spoil the fabric of the building.
So if you have not secured it, if you have not secured it, which clearly I can, I've already told you I've been up there, I'm down there, not in a malicious manner or anything, it was all open, I went in and out. So if you're telling me this is, should be secure, and you haven't secured it, so you failed at your job twice today.
No, I think what we're looking at here is managing it in a way that is, um, safe for all members of the public and for staff as well.
The only reason, the only reason the security guard saw me is because, you see that window over there? I put my head in there and I put my camera in there, the moment he saw me doing that, he didn't like it, so he reacted, from that moment, he's, he had an ego to not let me over there. The next person had an ego to not let me over there, the next person, an ego, the two police officers, they have an ego, he has an ego, the whole, I have an ego just to prove a point, I, I cannot go over there. You all know I have the right to go over there.
Okay, well, sorry.
And like I said to you, you making, the, the only thing is, you are saying this, but publicly, you're not gonna look good. You, you already stated you're a public servant.
These, these are offices.
And you've got the public watching you right now, and I promise you, these thousands and thousands of people are gonna watch this, they're not gonna like this.
Okay.
And there are the people, there are the people you're working for, you're not talking to me right now, just me, you're talking to thousands of people.
If anybody wants to write in, we're happy to respond and explain what we, what it is we do and why we do it.
Okay, if you have the courage to say to people, where do you want them to contact you, do you have a number?
Um, business card, yeah, I haven't got my card. I don't have a business card.
Yeah.[1773.02]